Welcome to the March 12, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd like to now turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda overview.
We'll shut the door. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Welcome to the work session today. For those tuning in from home, this is a different location. We put together the calendar a number of months ago, and we proposed during our budget adoption process, employing or deploying the second floor. It is connected. You can hear some of the sound. Our residents can see us. It is streamed live to our populace, so very, very exciting that we're here. And the idea, too, for the two-plus years that I've been here is we get around a table, roll up our sleeves, and kind of do the good work that we've done for the city of Lynchburg. And today, I'm going to ask favor Madam Mayor and kind of flip things around. So our business item briefings that are those opportunities that we engage council ahead of a vote, we usually do that second. I propose that we do it first, we can get staff kind of out of the way. And then the second part will be, you remember that we both in Finance and also Physical Development Committee engaged you on our, the city's capital improvement plan. We at the last work session, Donna Witt, our Chief Financial Officer, walked you through the capital improvement plan. You have, Mr. Taylor, I apologize, there are too many books. He was, he was talking to me about how many, we have a book for you. There's one later this evening. You can decide on which ones you want to keep because there's one that has everything in it. But this afternoon, Donna will first upfront answer many of the questions posed at that work session about our capital improvement plan, and then get into any else, anything else that you may consider. There is also a closed session this afternoon as well. So with that, may I turn it back to you?
Okay. Well, thank you so much. All right, so our first business item briefing, bond refunding resolution concerning the issuance of not to exceed $76,950,000. General obligation, public improvement refunding bonds, Series 2024. This item will appear before council for action on March 26, 2024. Ms. Donna Witt.
Thank you so much. So, um, there it goes. I hope you perceive this as good news, because I certainly do. So we have opportunity, even in this crazy market that we have going on with rising interest rates, an opportunity to refund the 2014 Series Bonds, which actually is where the snake came from. This was the Bonds, this was the Bond Series that I lovingly call the snake. So this is the biggest one we ever did. We've looked at refunding it for a number of years, but the call date on it was 10 years. So legislation was passed at the, at the federal level that didn't allow localities to advance refund Bond Series as tax exempt bonds. They would have to be taxable bonds. And so it never really worked to get enough savings to make that happen. We are now at the call date. So our financial advisors ran the numbers, and fingers crossed, it looks like it's going to work. So we'll finally get to refund the snake. So at the 26th meeting, I'll be asking you to approve the refunding and also appropriate the issuance cost. So the 2014 Geo Bonds Series was $115,190,000. It included Heritage High School, which was the pig. So that was your pig in the snake. The city stadium improvements, transportation projects for streets and bridges, the juvenile group home, the general government improvement projects. There were several different ones in there, smaller projects. There was also water and sewer improvement projects. And then we're also refunding Series 2006 Geo Bonds that were refunded when we did the 2014. So we're actually refunding and refunding. So those are the projects that were included. The bond call date is June 1 of 2024. So as I mentioned, federal law, we couldn't do this before, but now we have opportunity. Our financial policies say the refunding has to be greater than 3% net present value savings. So we're going to see what this one looks like. I had our financial advisors run these numbers this morning just to see what they were today because, of course, the market's constantly moving. When they first did this, our budgetary savings were going to be about 6.6 million across the general water and sewer funds. Today, when they ran it, we're at 5.9 million savings across those funds. The market changed a little bit. It went up seven basis points. But our net present value today is 5.73%, so well above our 3%. And our all-in total interest cost, instead of 3.15, which is just like amazing in this environment, is right today, it would be 3.29. So still pretty amazing in this environment. So the tax exempt interest rates would need to increase more than 40 basis points for us not to achieve a 3% net present value savings. So it looks like this is going to work. So our close date will be in early May. And of course, before we sell bonds, before we do anything, before we close, we'll run these numbers again just to make sure they still work with significant savings. It has to be more than 3%, but I think this is pretty great in this environment to end up with about a $6 million savings in interest costs, which are the majorities in the general fund. There's a little bit in water and sewer. So any questions that I can answer?
[inaudible]
Right.
That's over the 20-year life?
Yes, yeah. So we're not extending the life of these bonds. It'll still have the 2044 end date.
So what's interesting about this is, you know, what you put on there is the Heritage High School, the pig in the snake, which was referred to back then. Back then, people said, oh, let's hurry up and do Heritage High School sooner because interest rates are so low.
Right, they were.
And so they were very low. But what's happened?
They went lower.
They went lower. And what's happened again? They went a lot lower. Then what's happened again? Now they've soared. And what's happened again? They've soared a ton, but yet there's still the ability for us to refund?
Yes.
And save?
Yeah.
So, which is a great thing, but the learning, I think, experienced from this is follow what Thomas Jefferson said, and never buy something just because it's on sale. I think we did Heritage High School sooner in spite of the Sandusky Middle School, that was another 29 million already on there, and then another 80-some million for Heritage. It, and people said, at the time, they said, let's do it sooner. It was council, so I'm not saying staff. Council said, let's do it sooner because we can save so much money. And just look at how much, if we would have done it under the normal procedures, we could have saved because they dropped several times, hit the bottom, and then they've come up and now again. So I'm glad that we can do this. Now, you mentioned about the refunding or the call, so we don't have to pay a call premium?
No, no.
So the 10 days is when the call premium is done?
The 10 years is up, and we can refund within 90 days of the call date.
Okay. So within 90 days, we don't have to spend money on a call premium. What we're going to have to spend is the money on the new legal counsel, the new selling of it, the new advertising that you have in here.
Yeah, the issuance cost. Yes, we will have to get new ratings from our rating agencies.
Okay, which we'd do anyway, probably, for every year, we'd kind of do that.
Well, every time we borrow, yes.
Yeah. So with that, that outgoing cost is about 450, 450,000.
Correct.
And so over the next 20 years, or what these going to be issued for?
20-year bonds.
20-year bonds. So we're going to be saving the 6.6, and that's where you're doing the discounted net present value to make slightly change.
Correct.
Now, if interest rates start rising between now and then?
We won't sell.
We won't do, but.
Yeah, it's got to work for us to sell.
So it looks like it does work now, but again, the, just because something is on sale, we don't buy it because sometimes they go on a bigger sale. So I think we can learn a lot from this. So thank you for this, Donna.
Dr. Wilder?
Thank you for the information. We really appreciate it. Also, we had a crystal ball. We would know what the market was going to do. So it's kind of hard to predict the market, especially in these times. But thank you for the information. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to the adoption of the revised emergency operations plan, Fire Chief Greg Wormser.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The purpose of this business item briefing is to discuss with you the emergency operations plan and the changes that have taken place since its last visit to this council or a council four years ago. The reason why it comes before you is that every four years, it's required by code of Virginia for this to be adopted by city council or the governing body of the locality to take action and approve the emergency operations plan. Some, some quick noteworthy changes. Obviously, since this was adopted by council four years ago, the transition has occurred from emergency management, from the emergency services department to the fire department. As part of this transition, we've updated a number of emergency support functions that have changed, along with the director, obviously, has changed. And so as a result of those changes, that transition needed to happen. We've also had some additional language added in there about responsibilities of the administrative team relative to when the emergency operations center is open, when it's activated, and how that plan goes into effect. There's been a greater emphasis on provisions to ensure the plan is applied equitably to all of our citizens during an emergency, and that includes some community engagement representation, as well as equitable access to resources, ADA accessible resources like shelters that we operate, language interpretation of our resources that are available, some additional employee training, along with accessible emergency communications. As you know, we use like Lynchburg Alerts. It's just one of the many features that we use in order to inform our citizens when an emergency is happening and what they can do either to protect themselves or their neighbors. The last, one of the last things is, as part of the plan, is a greater emphasis on cybersecurity. Specifically on page 17, we added some additional information about coordination that occurs with the Virginia Fusion Center. And so that's a collaboration with the Virginia State Police that not only the fire department, but also the Lynchburg Police Department are already partners with. And this takes that partnership to the next level, allows us to get more credible information more quickly that we can pass along to the information technology department should there be a threat of cybersecurity attacks. Finally, we've added some additional policies from our last update that had some minor changes, again, about where radio caches were located, extra radios for staff, how we respond in an emergency, who activates the emergency support functions. So just some internal policies that sort of streamline and make that communication a little more seamless at 2:00 in the morning when we're all trying to figure out what exactly is going on and how we can best, how we can best serve the citizens. So again, as I stated, the update cycle happens every four years. It must be adopted by code and remaining, in order for us to remain in compliance. And so this would come before you again, or council again, in another four years, once it is adopted at the, at the meeting in, on March 26. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Huggins?
You know, you've, obviously, it's a long document. Do you have items that are changed? Because I see where you have, kind of in the beginning of your slides, it just says some noteworthy changes. You know, this is an emergency operations plan. I typically don't think emergency operations plans are dictated based on race or something, but you have listed as your second bullet point, the needs of the minority. I know you mentioned ADA, which I can understand that for vulnerable communities. Is the minority, like, you're talking about like race or something, or what kind of minority are you referring to?
No, again, anybody who previously had not had accessibility, so as we described, like Lynchburg Alerts and other ways that we can make shelters ADA accessible. We also consider, you know, those vulnerable portions of our population also minorities.
Okay. So when you say the word minority, you're not referring to like racism or racist?
No, sir, this is an all-encompassing, this is an all-encompassing operations plan for everybody in the city.
Okay. And now going forward, I know the previous items were like, you know, I was, we did have a, where this was called under, when I was here, and it was originally set for 14 days, like I think the plan calls for, right? And without, you know, we had one that was set for 14 days that ended up going for 16 months with COVID and whatnot. What, I don't want to see us do that again. I mean, that's not a good thing. It had nothing to do with operations of city government that you need to suspend the normal operations because you still have the ability for the legislator body, us, to meet and to direct and to do whatever. So is there something in there where it's 14 days? I read at one portion in there that it could be up to 45 days and.
That's certainly at the discretion of, obviously, council. If the city manager were to enact the EOC or declare an emergency locally, that is certainly, you know, up for discussion about how long that should be, when it should sunset, those kinds of things, all circumstances based on the type of incident. Obviously, the emergency operations plan is designed to be an all-hazards plan for any type of situation. It's difficult, in this day and time, to, to cover everything and every possibility, but we certainly will communicate that to you through the city manager where appropriate.
Because normally, when you think of, when I think of an emergency, you know, you think of, you know, major devastation, like usually that's something that happened, whether hurricanes or tornadoes or earthquakes or fires or riots or something, that's an imminent danger as opposed to something that was protracted over 16 months without, and, you know, there was no really imminent immediate danger, but yet it continued. So this is looking at, and hopefully the language states that it's looking at things that are, you know, imminent danger, and that's where you enact the emergency plan.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Assessment and assumption?
Correct.
Because that's important. I mean, I remember years ago, trying to remember the guy's name, who was one of the first ones that I remember when they wrote this. You know, a lot of different things to be on the alert for when things happen badly. But things happen badly, not political things happen badly, actual things happen badly. So hopefully, this deals with actual things that happen badly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council missions?
I will. Is there a possibility that we could get a portion of this that is highlighted or underlined, or something that shows what the changes are from the previous plan?
Yeah, sure, we can, we can get that to you. I don't see why not.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And just one thing that I do want to kind of highlight in here that I appreciate, that I don't know if this was in the previous one, but it's definitely in this one, is that it looks like you guys are taking steps to address the mental health and emotional well-being of responders after the fact, which is huge, right? So I want to commend you all that because I think that's definitely something in, you know, years past. I know we haven't had the focus or attention on that that we should. So it's great to see the strides that are being made there and to see that actually, as a bullet point to make sure we're taking care of our public safety responders is super important. And then the only other question I have is, are there any, and I guess we'll see this when it comes back highlighted, but were there any major changes with the public health portion of this?
No, no major changes with the public health. The response to public health substantially, substantially stayed the same as it did in the last iteration. Doesn't really direct how to respond, directs what ESFs and what personnel to notify when there is a public health emergency.
Got it. Okay, that's, that's all I got, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
You have to rotate your radio system out every, every four years, you say?
No, so the, the plan has to be rotated every four years. One of the additions to the plan was we have a cache or a storage bin, frankly, for lack of a better way to say it, of radios that we can provide to staff. That's one of the additions that we made to the plan, is staff oftentimes, when there's an emergency, there are not enough radios to go around because they're using them constantly, they're getting wet, they're being dropped. It's just in more use. Everybody has the same radio, but they're getting used more often, and so we have a plan now so that we can redistribute radios as needed during an operation, especially if we have to call in resources from outside the city.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right, moving on, rezoning. B-3C, Community Business District, conditional to B-5C, General Business District, conditional, 2820, 2840, 2842, 2844, Linkhorn Drive. This item will appear before council for action on April 9, 2024. Ms. Rachel Fritshyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Members of Council. The purpose of this petition is to allow a portion of the existing shopping center within the 2,800 block of Linkhorn Drive to be used for storage units. The units themselves would be climate-controlled and be located in the former grocery store space in the shopping center, as well as some, some of the existing retail buildings, with two additional new self-storage structures being located towards the rear of the property. The city's future land use map recommends community commercial for this area. These areas are meant to contain retail, personal service, entertainment, and restaurant uses, and are often clustered together, such as the existing shopping center. The property is zoned B3 and B3C. The B3 district was established in 1978 and was sort of the core of the shopping center. The B3C portion, the conditional portion, was established in 1981 when it was rezoned from R3 Medium Density Residential to allow the expansion of the Forest Hill Shopping Center, and again in 1983 to amend proffers. And again in 2019, proffers were also amended. That would have allowed for the expansion of a parking area for a call center that intended to go into the former grocery store space. During that rezoning, there were some stormwater concerns that were raised. Ultimately, the parking lot expansion was not constructed, and the call center did not move into the space it had planned, so the stormwater proffers were not fulfilled. Yet, the current petitioner, Swint Storage, has proffered those same standards again, as well as a proffer that limits the B5 use to only be the self-storage component, and it does not include other B5 uses, such as auto repair, commercial equipment rental, vehicle sales, et cetera. And the proffers also limit the storage units to the portion shown on the plan rather than the entire shopping center. It also establishes an architectural standard for the new buildings, as well as the revamped buildings to be something like stone, stucco, brick, avoiding a more industrial metallic type finish that would look more industrial next to the neighborhood. Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition on February 28, after their public hearing, and the city council public hearing will be held not at your next meeting, but at the following meeting on April 9, due to your upcoming budget work sessions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Huggins?
No, this, this one, it's a little, you know, it used to be residential, as R3, as you stated. Then it got turned into a B3 for a shopping center, which Kroger was there for decades. To now change it some more, to have, you know, storage units is just a, I don't know how, I don't know how I feel about that. I don't think very warmly because it, you know, it is a neighborhood around there, and that's where the, the zone that was R3 then got changed to B3. To go to a B5 in that area and having just a lot of, you know, having those, the B5 is obviously there so you can have those storage units, I don't know if that's the place for it. It's just, what did staff think about that at the beginning, you know, from a planner's perspective?
I had a similar reaction, just at the face, on the face of the petition to, you know, to move from the B3 to B5, kind of getting away from that more neighborhood-driven commercial. However, I think the petitioner, staff has worked with the petitioner on this concept plan. You know, we expressed that, that maintaining the retail presence and the, the existing uses in the B3 was of particular interest to staff to not let the entire site become B5, and I think that's reflected in their proffers, them limiting the uses to the, the storage component only, and only in the certain areas. It's, it's a balance, definitely, seeing this shopping center that has, has been a, not to throw stones at all, but it's been a little bit stagnant since the, since the Kroger space has been vacated with really not much interest since then. So that was what staff was weighing, the reuse of the building. They also have intended, or have indicated that they intend to improve the remainder of the shopping center. They are purchasing the entire piece, not just the, Swint Storage is purchasing the entire property, not just the storage portion, and they intend to bring some facade improvements to the existing retail, as well as potentially that new commercial or restaurant building up front, and just revitalizing the center as a whole.
Can you turn to page 110, whatever that is on our, in our book?
I don't have the entire packet up here, but if, are you looking at something in the planning commission packet?
Yes, I'm looking at where it's red. There you go, that one. I don't know if we can pull that up. Yes.
Yeah, I don't have that slide on, on this, on this set.
So with that slide, which is in our packet, it's page 110, I'm seeing just this small little circle of B5C. Is that the only place that's going to be B5C?
So this is the existing zoning as it is currently. The B5C exists because there is some sort of tower, and that is a radius around an existing, I believe it's a telecommunications tower. The.
Okay, so one's page 109 is what it is currently, and then where's it going to? So they're making the whole thing a B5C?
No, so it would be the portion, I realize it's confusing because there's B3 and B3C from where the shopping center would be expanded. It would be the B3C portion that is changing to the B5C.
So do we have a slide for that?
It's, it's best illustrated on this slide here. There's a dashed line that shows the distinction between the B3, which is the.
Do you got a pointer or anything that you can?
There's a laser pointer on there, but it's not. It doesn't work on the TV, unfortunately. There is a dashed line going, kind of cutting through where it says existing retail building A across into the storage, or the vacant Kroger space on the right.
Yep.
Below that is the B3 portion. Above that is the B3C portion, and that is the portion that would be, yes, thank you so much.
So all above that would be the B5, B5C?
Up to where the existing B3C stops. They are not rezoning the back portion, which is remaining residential.
But up to the red line up there where it says proposed self-storage unit? So a self-storage unit has to be a B5?
Yes.
And it has, and we're recommending a B5 conditional, so it's not every B5 use?
Yes.
So that would have to, the whole thing would have to change going back, which is kind of a butt, the residential back there, right?
It is residential, however, it is part of this property. It's not privately owned residential.
It, behind where that red line is?
Yes. This is all part of the shopping center property. The, the business zoning stops here. The remainder is residential, and they are not proposing to change that.
But it is a substantial portion of this, and I think it's at six acres that is going to be proposed to be rezoned from B3 to B5.
Correct.
Yeah. It, you know, sometimes you do things for, that are a better thing for the neighborhood and better for the community, and I'm kind of wrestling with how that is better for the community to have more storage units, you know? So I don't know how we can wrestle with that between now and, I guess you said the public hearing isn't, not till August, but?
Is, no, April, April 9.
April, I meant, yes, sorry.
They did indicate, Swint Storage, the petitioner indicated they held a neighborhood meeting and sent out letters to adjoining property owners, and actually got some positive feedback just on revitalizing the shopping center in general. They got a lot of feedback of, you know, avoiding the auto-oriented uses, which the proffer, limiting it to the self-storage units.
But a B3 couldn't do that now.
Correct.
So the, so that's, I think that's a kind of a red herring because you can't do that now. The only way you could do other things would be to change the zoning, right?
Correct, to go to the B5.
Yeah, and so the changing the zoning, but only limiting it, is, it's, it's still making a change from what it is now.
Yes.
Would be nice to get, to see something, because that shopping center, for a long period. Would be nice to see something, because that shopping center, for a long period of time, was a fantastic shopping center. I mean, that Kroger was good. I mean, it's, you know, now you have these super Krogers and super Walmarts, and kind of put away or put at bay a little bit some of these little closer, or little smaller grocery stores, but I just, you know, the self-storage units, I don't know what they really do for a community.
Vice Mayor Froldy?
Just some clarity to our attorney. I'm not saying it would be unnatural to reject a proposed development for what it may or may not be, but we would have to identify issues with what the use would be that are itemized for justification for us to reject it. In other words, we couldn't say, "We don't like storage units."
That's correct.
We would have to find another reason to articulate, and I just want us to be very careful as we entertain this, even, and I'm not saying, you know, trying to punish anybody for saying, "I don't like storage units," that's not my intent. My intent is to say, "We should find a..."
Yes.
"...more itemized reason that is articulated in state code," I think.
That's right. So really, what the premise in zoning decisions revolves around the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So if, I guess, using Councilmember Helgason's thoughts as it relates to residential, it would be whether or not the use is harmonious with the community, the surrounding community, because it's residential. So it would be along those lines, who would be dealing with whether or not there were traffic concerns, stormwater concerns. So you're absolutely right, you have to have some way that you enunciate or rely upon reasons that are lawful.
And I didn't pick up on that, because I've learned to hear what my colleagues are trying to articulate and communicating, but I don't want it to be heard a different way from especially the developer looking to make a change.
Sure.
Observation on my part, I think Councilman Helgason makes a lot of fair points. I believe, how long has the, especially the, I'll call it the call center, been vacant? I mean, three years now?
I don't think the call center actually moved into, I would have to verify. My understanding is that the call center never actually moved into the Kroger center, unless they were trying to do an expansion for that parking lot. I can look into that.
Well, yeah, forgive me, the reason I said that is because it, by my interpretation, I'm willing to be wrong, proposed self-storage unit with use of existing building, is that not the call center?
That is the former Kroger space, and that is where the call center intended to move. That's when they proposed an expansion of the parking lot, and they needed to revise those proffers in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. If it's done right, they can be a good addition. If it's done wrong, it's an eyesore, and nobody likes it. I would point to the one, I forget what church it used to be, but for reference in my logic, if you were to go to the Chick-fil-A on Timberlake in Campbell County, there's an old church back in there that a company came in and redid it, and I don't know what zoning they were, or how they did, but, I mean, it's a wonderful facility, security is a hundred percent, you know, property values, I'm assuming, are going up because of the cash flow and what that can mean to a future investor. So I have hesitations, but just from a neighborhood standpoint, I don't think it would be that hard of a sell. I'm willing to be convinced that I'm wrong, I'm just, you know, just for example, of one that is in the Lynchburg area that was done, at least by my eye, very, very well for everybody's consideration.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Did I understand this correctly, that this is going to be, you enter it through the inside, it's not like an outside entrance, like you go into the drive-in, so it would not be like some of these, this would be new to this area? And it was my understanding also that they would probably demolish the old Kroger building, or they would have to, if they're gonna...
So they've indicated their intent to us is to reuse the Kroger building, and it would be a drive-in facility, so you would not see roll-up doors from the street, it wouldn't give off the appearance of, you wouldn't read it right away as storage units. It would be, you'd be accessing it from the internal doors, not the external.
Thank you.
And I guess with this is, they're asking for change. So it's incumbent upon them to give a good reason why we would give a change, rather than us to say why we have a good reason to not approve a change that they're requesting. Fair to say?
Absolutely.
Huh? She said absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, because when somebody says, "We want to make a change..."
Yes, the onus is on the petitioner, yes.
Yes, exactly. So I don't think it's necessarily, we have to have a good reason to deny it. They have to have a good reason to approve why they want it to be changed, and why this is good, and why it does make good land-use decisions, as we're looking at with our zoning. The community, or the corporate plan, I don't think ever called for this to be a B-five in any way, did it?
So the future land use map indicates community commercial, which could be a B-three or B-five. Zoning doesn't always, it's not set in stone that B-one will be neighborhood commercial, and B-five will be community commercial. It's meant to be more generalized, and up to council to make that call.
And I see how this could work nicely, and it seems like they're doing extra effort to try to make it work, but it's still, it's, it's just, I think it just gives a little pause. It's not just an easy, I don't think.
Madam Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
I did want to just add one thing to what Rachel, Councilmember Helgason, had said. While certainly the developer, the applicant for the rezoning, you know, should present good reason for the change, council just can't deny the rezoning for the wrong reasons. That's probably a good way to put it. There are lawful reasons to deny rezonings, you just can't do it unlawfully, if that makes sense.
Sure. Councilman?
Exactly.
You can hit a button, it says "no," and you didn't say anything.
Yeah. Councilmembers?
So, and one of those reasons, correct me if I'm wrong, is if it, that may not get this language perfect, and you can correct it for me, please, is if it disrupts harmony within the community. Is that correct?
Yes, so as I understand it, having harmony in the uses of the community is something council can consider as part of rezonings.
And that can be articulated in a variety of ways, so, but, you know, kind of going back on some of the other comments that were made, I can think specifically of a couple facilities actually in the city that are, like those drive-in or walk-in type, the apartment complexes beside the Sheets on Timberlake Road, the building right adjacent to that Sheets is a self-storage building. Most people probably would not know that, because I don't even think it has it big and blazing on the side of it, but it is a huge, beautiful building that is interior self-storage. The U-Haul building on Timberlake Road is another one inside that is self-storage. All the roll-up doors are inside, it's not an unattractive building. So I think that, done the right way, you know, could kind of meet those needs and, you know, potentially find that harmony we're looking for in the community. The question that I have about that proposed self-storage building B, Rachel, is that going to be more of a traditional, like, would the roll-up doors, I guess, face the inside of that kind of interior area? Is that what that, is that designed, planned to be sort of like a normal, traditional metal building, self-storage building, or is that...
I want to check their narrative before I answer that question, certainly. And I should have clarified that building B, I believe, is a, an outdoor facility, meaning it has a wall, and it's covered, but it would be for more something like a boat or RV storage, but from the street, it would give the appearance of just a building. It would not be...
Okay, so that's not even necessarily like the roll-up door storage that may be?
But...
I rent a space to park my RV in the winter, or to winterize my boat, when, instead of leaving it in my driveway or something along those lines?
Correct. This page in your packet gives a good perspective. Once you are in the site, you would be able to tell that it is an outdoor sort of large vehicle storage, but from the front of the site, it would not give the appearance of storage.
Which, you know, in that notion, there might be people that live in the neighborhood that have boats and RVs that are looking for a place to park, so that's something also to think about. Okay, thank you.
Mother Wilder?
Yes, thank you for your information. I had noticed that one on the new surface of Timberlake Road, and I had no idea, it was a storage place, did it, like, opening a week ago? I noticed a lot of storage places coming up. Is there a particular reason, do we know why, because of rents so high, or?
Well, so, I think we've heard anecdotally that, you know, a good number of our college population utilizes those from lease, lease, year to year. I think people are choosing to live a little bit smaller these days, and find themselves with excess things, you know, either they're inheriting, or they're trying to decide what they do with, if they're downsizing, if they're upsizing, but I think, I think the college population contributes a good bit.
Yeah, I just noticed so many of them lately, okay. I'm interested to hear what the, you know, so far, you said the neighbors didn't have any comments. I'm looking for the open forum to see if they have any concerns about that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Hager?
Just generally speaking, Dr. Wilder, from my understanding, it's simply a, just a really safe investment from a developer's standpoint, because once they turn the key and start getting people in leasing the various units, the monthly cash flow, they can immediately either sell it and reinvest to do another one, or keep it, and it's just, it's been a sound investment. You're actually seeing a lot of investors turn around and say that they're going to put, you know, their portfolios into something like this, is what I'm seeing, so.
One of the things I was going to say, too, is that what we're seeing with the increase of multifamily units around the city is, you're right on, you know, right on the point there, is that they need the extra storage. One of our presentations that we had was, I forget where it was, that is kind of the trend, is we're seeing, even with townhomes and small-unit patio home-style living is kind of the trend of the future. We're not seeing large neighborhoods anymore, and single-family homes being built on large lots, so where you see that being the trend for the future, you're going to see smaller storage units for all homes, all-size neighborhoods now. So those, those storage units are on the rise really nationally, from what I'm understanding as well. So in a college town, along with that trend, I think this is just where we're going to see things going. I do have a question. With the number of vacant shops in that center right now, do you know offhand?
I believe a good number. I think the Dollar General, there's a restaurant, a gym. Is the emerging care still there?
I know there's a nail salon, and there's a couple of restaurants, but I mean, do you know if there's, I mean, as far as vacancies?
Asian Fusion, I think, just moved in there.
Yeah, so my understanding is it's mostly occupied, and at the neighborhood meeting, some residents expressed that, you know, they want to see some of those uses stay, and the petitioner sounded like they were open to that, to try to accommodate, you know, keeping some of those uses that would be in the space that's going to be converted to storage units, moving them elsewhere on the property.
Okay, good to know, yeah. Councilwoman Helgason?
Page one-twenty-four, I don't know if you have that one. That's like an aerial, so that may be a little more helpful.
Like, what?
So going behind them, that boundary line, that's the whole property?
Yes, that wooded area is part of the shopping center.
And so none of that would be, that's all staying R-three?
I believe the line comes across, I'll get a better visual for you.
Okay.
There is a line that cuts across, but majority of that would stay R-three.
So it stays R-three, and it's vacant now, it's probably fairly hilly, I imagine, the topography's bad.
Yes, it's quite steep.
And so with that, there is a good border behind there, so changing the property much on here, the different uses, may not be as bad, because you have, they have the border, and they have the edging, I believe, right? Am I looking at that right?
Yeah, it would be a significant buffer.
And so back to your, as far as the current uses and the current buildings that are occupied, you're mostly looking at the side, or this developer is mostly looking at renovating the buildings that are unoccupied, the old Kroger, where the Dollar General was, and up that way, to change that into the storage units?
Yes, that, that existing kind of cluster of buildings on the right would be the storage. Let me bring that back up. There it is. The pink is the existing buildings. Those would be converted to the climate-controlled storage. The purple are new storage buildings that they would be constructing, and the blue, and the, the blue is existing that remains for commercial use, and the yellow is a new commercial building up front.
So with it, are they, are they wanting the whole property to be B-five-three, or just those blue and pink new buildings?
It would be just the, just the portion where the storage is.
Okay, good, good, that's better, too, so, thank you.
And that was something that staff expressed, that a major concern would be to rezone the entire thing.
So it's not the whole?
Right.
It never goes to the whole?
The whole thing, yeah, exactly, that was another concern.
Okay, well, I think we have thoroughly discussed the, this storage plan until you come back again, and we'll hopefully hear from some of the people in the neighborhood, so, I appreciate it. We will move on to the flag display resolution, Ms. Jean Elhart.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city councils. I am here to discuss a resolution about how to display flags on city flag poles, so we're going to receive that information and discuss an adoption of a resolution today, where the resolution considers standardizing the display of flags on city flag poles. Our current practices are, really, right now, flags are handled by various departments, and these are just some examples that I, that I had as I was preparing for this. As I rode around, I saw more flag poles than I realized that we had. So the courts, the sheriff handles the flags, and their replacement, City Hall and the Public Library, Public Works handles them, for instance, the baseball stadium, the Hillcats actually handle the flag out there, but, you know, we've got flag poles at Miller Park that we handle, City Stadium, so there's just different people handle the different sites. Our damaged flags are taken to the American Legion for proper disposal, when they've just gotten faded, or they got damaged by wind, or whatever. We purchase the flags here at a local flag shop, so that's where we get our flags, and when we need to fly flags at half-staff, there is a way to subscribe to a notice that departments can be notified that they need to lower the flag. So this proposed resolution just basically provides a list of flags to be permitted to be flown at city buildings and city facilities and parks, and those include, of course, the United States flag, the Commonwealth of Virginia flag, the POW and MIA flag, we have a City of Lynchburg flag, that many of us didn't know about until just recently, city department flags, and just other flags as permitted by Virginia or federal law. So what this resolution would do would be authorize and encourage standard policies and procedures for flags on city properties, city facilities. It would be, it would ensure flags are flown in accordance with state and federal laws, and it would encourage other political subdivisions to adopt a similar resolution, similar to this. So that's kind of what this resolution does, and I guess the idea would be to discuss it and decide if we're going to take it to another city council and adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councilwoman Dolan?
Yeah, so, can I, I don't know if this citizen emailed other people or not, but there was some concern expressed by a citizen that, that questioning whether or not a future president decides that a flag celebrating him or herself is approved as the official flag to be displayed, and how you would address that, or if a government-sanctioned flag displays a message that demeans somebody. So I'm just bringing this forth, because a citizen was very concerned about it, and said, "We really need to look at the foundation of this, as to whether or not," I mean, how would you address this, or?
If I may interject, considering the United States' flag as an act of Congress, I think that would have to be a little bit more robust than just the president changing it.
I'm going to lean on the city attorney on this, I'm not sure I've got a good answer for it, yes.
So, it's a great question, you know, and I think the Vice Mayor is correct, you know, the United States' flag is covered by congressional acts, it's in the US Code, how it's flown, you know, what it's made up of... how it's flown, you know, what it's made up of. You know, for something like that to happen, I suppose it would have to be by executive order. And I don't even necessarily, I suppose what, what I would say is this resolution, if it's adopted, would really trigger city staff to adopt internal policies that standardize how we fly them. So I suppose if there was a flag that came up hypothetically, you know, with President whoever's face on it and that's what they wanted flown, you know, we would have to account for it in the policy. What I anticipate this policy would do is really just use the flags that we know of at this point that we fly and find ways to ensure we're standardizing it in accordance with federal and state law, you know, and as issues like that might arise, the city manager and staff could always revisit the policy to account for it, you know, assuming there was legitimate law backing up what was, what was purported to be pushed down.
Thank you, should answer this question. Councilor Missions?
Couple things. First is, kind of in spirit, I like the idea of this. I would like to see the flags of the Armed Forces of the United States added to this list specifically. And second is when we, we're going through, can you back up a couple of slides?
Yes.
Slowly. All right, right there. So this says provide a list of flags to be permitted to be flown at city buildings. And the resolution says shall display the following flags upon its properties in accordance with Virginia and/or federal law. So when I see the, the bib, I kind of see that as saying, this is being presented in a way where we're discussing whether or not, you know, like these are the flags we are permitting a city council to be flown with this policy. But then when I read the resolution, it doesn't say anything about permitting flags or prohibiting other flags. It just says that these are the flags that we shall fly in accordance with Virginia and/or federal law. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Friedman? Do you understand?
It does. And the reason it's written that way is to make clear that the city as an entity is required to fly these particular flags. So I'm, I don't know if the flags of the Armed Forces would fall under that prong number six. It may be that they would. And certainly we can look into that and get back to council on that, that question. But it may be that would be covered. But the, I guess when we say permitted, council should keep in mind that this resolution really applies to the city as an entity only. So it's not as if we're allowing others. I guess the way I read it is it could be construed to whoever may be permitted to fly them. The idea was to standardize for the city's purposes only what flags we fly in accordance with state and federal law.
Because I would be in favor of prohibiting any other flags being flown in city owned buildings other than, you know, these flags listed, if that makes sense. I would be in favor of that. I don't think that we should have, you know, necessarily non-governmental flags flying in city buildings or, or outside city buildings or whatever, because I think that, you know, we need to recognize who's funding these buildings and who's funding these flag poles. And the best way to, to respect everybody is to limit what's flown on them. So, so that's something that comes to mind as well. And the reason I specifically point out the flags of the Armed Forces of the United States is because if there was a future addition to Monument Terrace where they wanted to erect, you know, a flag pole for each one of the, you know, somehow going up to, to recognize each one of the branches of the Armed Forces, I just would want that, me personally would, would want that specifically written into this. So that, those are, those are the questions that I have. So this is more or less really directing us to direct the city manager to come up with policy and we're kind of telling him.
That's correct. And if I had to give a recommendation for council, I would probably suggest staying away from the word prohibit. Because what, what city council doesn't want to do with this resolution is get in a compromise or a situation where the city manager or staff or building manager, whatever it may be, is having to try to enforce on, say, employees or things that may not necessarily be an official act of the city. And I say that because there are other ways to address something like that. So if, if we have a situation where, say, you have an employee that's engaging in, in political activity by flying a flag they shouldn't be flying, that can be addressed in that manner. I, I would probably suggest, at least for our purposes, given the intent of this resolution is to apply to the entity of the city only, to leave it as essentially what the city is to fly versus prohibiting certain things being flown.
And I think that the, and I appreciate that, that explanation. And nothing, and what I'm saying is intended to, to consider the, the right of our employees to have free expression. But, you know, official city flag poles, official city building displays of flags, I don't, you know, even in a, like a school gymnasium or something like that, if they have an American flag, like, I can see a reason to say we're only going to fly governmental flags or such in these buildings, because I just think that that's, it's clean, you know. We don't need to be flying, you know, partisan political flags. We don't need to be flying any of that stuff. But we should be recognizing our country, our, our Commonwealth. The POW flag is something that's very well accepted throughout the United States and so on. Those are just my concerns about it. And then just something else also to kind of point out is that this resolution, if we pass it, will be directing the city manager to create certain policy. That's been attempted before through an MEO resolution. And there were a lot of people sitting in this room that said we shouldn't be directing the city manager to craft policy. Just want to point that out.
Ms. Haldy?
Councilman Missions, and we've had a very pleasant meeting. And I would say I did not go into this without understanding that cheap shot would be offered. But the, the fact of the matter is, is how we got here and how it was presented and how it was engaged with the staff. And how we do our business is important. And I'll leave it at that.
Councilor Madola?
I just have one question, and for Matt. By using the word shall in this, does that mean it's mandatory that you fly these flags? Or, or should you use the word may to play? Can you use the word may instead of shall? Because shall means are permitted. Otherwise, shall implies that you have to have the flag of all these.
I just have a problem, I just have a problem with the word shall.
So, that's also a great question. And shall, shall usually means shall, but doesn't always mean shall. Well, and I say that, I say that because the intent here was to have a directive of what particular flags were to be flown by the city. Now certainly council could change it to may, you know, but may also opens up to ambiguities, you know, and certainly either, either way, if it's at, if it's at shall, these are the flags that would be listed in the city's policy is, is my understanding. But adding may, and certainly council could, I think it makes it a little bit more ambiguous than what shall would be, and that's why I chose that terminology.
So maybe what you say, if you're going to display a flag, the following flags are allowed.
Vice Mayor, hold on. Oh, no, you're finished, you're finished? Vice Mayor Haldy?
If I may, I mean, I think that's why Clause 2 is written to say that the manager is authorized and encouraged. He's actually not directed to do it. It's authorized and encouraged to produce policies. If there is concern about shall, I, I can see that. It ends saying federal law, you could end it with saying where appropriate, and that still covers you if that is a major concern. But in conjunction with Section 2 saying authorized and encouraged, in fact, we're not directing anything, but knowing our manager, the way I think we all do, I'm sure he would take this as a, a request of council to produce something officially.
Mr. Friedman, do you have a comment on that or how do you, as far as those?
No, I, I anticipate that really to, however this resolution is worded, city staff will do its very best to ensure that it has, has what it needs in place to make sure we're flying the flags council would like us to fly. You know, what, I guess what I would ask, just so I'm clear on, on what to bring back, is council wanting language that would simply say something like, the following flags will be flown by the City of Lynchburg and just list them out versus having shall or may out. I want to make, make sure I give you all what you, you want. Would you all rather that than the word, than how it's worded here?
Councilor Haggason?
But you're with that, obviously the shall, I think, needs to, to go. And that you don't have to just change one word, you change the sentence structure. Instead of saying shall to may, because the may doesn't do what you're, what you're saying, I get that, but shall certainly doesn't. So you change the sentence structure to say what is permitted. The following flags, you know, under the municipal operations, the following flags are permitted upon the city property. So that's the way you would do it, where those flags are permitted. Not that you have to do all six of them. The other one I think that you probably got to remove, or should probably think about removing would be number five, department flags. Because department flags, I think we're done with department flags, aren't we? Didn't we a few months ago kind of make a logo for everybody? Remember when we had a meeting?
Sure.
Where we had all sorts of departments and it said all sorts of flags, this one had that, this one had that. I think you remove that so you're not having a department because all those flags are the same, right?
Some part of.
Same, same symbol or same.
Yes, many of them are, also have paramilitary. So I have the police department, the fire department, to a degree, 911 operations. I have other departments that sell tickets or revenue, so like the museum or other places. So yes, there is in fact an effort to kind of get on message with a brand, but there are other departments that I recognize. I'm sorry?
It's not there yet with just the one.
Correct.
So this needs to stay from what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Councilor Missions?
Right, so the honor guards that we have in the police department and the fire department, they have, you know, there's a Lynchburg Fire Department flag, there's so on and so forth. And we definitely would want to prohibit, prohibit those. But I think Councilman Haggis had nailed it by changing that language to kind of what was presented to us in the bib, saying that, you know, these are the flags that are permitted. And I'll say it again, as I've said it before, I would love to see a seventh bullet in there that says the flags of the Armed Forces of the United States. So if that's something that we could do by consensus, I think that that would be important to do.
The 9/11 flag?
Yeah, which is part of that.
So adding the, adding a seventh bullet point to say the flags of the Armed Forces and the 9/11 flag by consensus, if everyone's okay with that, the freedom flag. If that, once Mr. Friedman looks into that, make sure that that's, I guess permissible for whatever you were referencing earlier?
Yes, I can do that. It is, is council also. In agreement with Councilman Haggison's language, the permitted, the following flags are permitted on the city property.
Right, covered number six, I'm sorry.
Maybe what it's specifically stating it, I think is the purpose.
Right.
Just so you know what they are. The permitted language that he had mentioned.
Permitted, is that, okay, we're not changing it from, from shall to permitted? Yeah, I think that's a better choice.
Right, you could see six flags of every pole. It's like, you know, you got like 28 flags, which then you're not, you're not doing, you're not honoring anything when you honor everything.
I do think it's cool to note that, I believe it was Mr. Venda that said that some of our veterans from Monument Terrace have come over and watched our staff raise our flags in front of City Hall to make sure we're doing it properly, which is pretty cool to know that they're making sure. So we're being watched, but this would be, I think this would be cool to add, so. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Missions?
What I think, we're going to be pushing to try to get lights, like actual.
We've actually installed it. One of the things that's helped with some of the, I know Councilman Haggison had asked for, I know that City Hall and that's, Kent White got, made sure, so we are being watched, the veterans do help us about how we fold, but when you uplift, uplift, we can keep it up for longer. And so any, anywhere we can, we are starting to provide light to illuminate the American flag.
Because I know that that was, that was something that we, we started pushing forward at the fire stations was, was getting.
I think this one's on City Hall, right?
Every flag lit up at night so that, you know, so we didn't have to take them up and down, so that, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, cool.
Anyone else?
My flag is lit up at night.
It was mine.
Okay, moving on.
Mayor, as we transition to Donowitz, okay? Someone made mention, and it was something that came up in this conversation, is about Lynchburg's official flag. And our museum director Ted has given a resource, there's more information that I'll put in your packet, but I'll pass this around. It is Gaynor Hart, thank you. She already, did she just, she is, she is fast. Because when I had asked after it, we originally didn't know where, if we had one and we asked Gaynor and she had one in her office, it's now in mine. So we're going to make sure that it's properly displayed. And we've got some others on, on order so that we can send it to our local delegation at the General Assembly so they can display them in their offices as well. So we're on that. So here's some information to take with you and we'll put it in the packet next time.
Great, thank you very much. All right, moving on to our work session agenda items, the presentation follow-up for the fiscal year 2025 to 2029 for capital improvement program, city and schools. Ms. Donowitz?
Thank you so much. And this presentation is intended to address the questions that were asked at the last work session. So we're looking specifically at those projects and the questions that were asked. Well, all right. All right, I'm having like, oh, that spazzes a bit of the foam or something. That's probably what it was. Okay, so Bedford Avenue Bridge, there was a question just asking for more information. This is the, the intent is to replace the deteriorating structure over Norfolk Southern Railway. This bridge did get a poor condition rating from the Comprehensive Bridge Condition Report, and the abutments are deteriorated, the bridge deck has spalling and concrete exposed reinforced steel. So there is $14.7 million of federal funding in this project and another seven for local funding on our line of credit for, on this $22 million bridge.
Any questions about this project? Councilor Haggison?
So you're, so maybe last meeting, some people mentioned something about some of these projects and that's why you're bringing up more.
Yes, yes. These are only the projects that were requesting more information.
And so today we're looking, you're presenting more information. And it's, has nothing to do with, you know, we're not going to go through some of these things and say, oh, well, we talked about it, so therefore the CIP is done. We're still having time to talk and.
This is a work session, as we proposed. We've now met with you at least twice in committee and once out in front. We've got questions, so this is another opportunity. If there are other questions that have come up since you've, we've last met or even from these projects, we'll continue to discuss those.
So this one, so it is specific to this project? So the funding was like some, a federal funding specific for this project?
That's correct.
So this is money that you can't just arbitrarily move to some other thing?
That's correct.
Like other monies were. Okay, thank you. And this is 100%? Looks like close to, it looks like 100% or all close to 100%?
No, $14.7 million of federal money and seven million, just over $7 million of city money.
Oh, that's in 2026.
So it's a 22 million dollar project.
So that's in 2026.
Correct.
So the money that's already been appropriated, is there any work being done since it's in poor condition? Or we got to wait till we appropriate the 2026 money? Do you have to have it all?
There are prior appropriations for the state of good repair funding, so that work, the design work is ongoing. I think the the local money where it's placed is part of it will be done ahead. And then, and then like probably one lane and then the other or and how it's spent.
So so we're looking at the money that is needed in a couple of years, so 2026. So and and obviously you're going to be looking at something that says, hey, this bridge is so bad, we need to do something now. My mom drove over 35W, which is the interstate that fell in the Minnesota River. Mayor Jane knows that road. And that bridge where they're saying, hey, this bridge, we need to do something. So I don't want to say, oh, well, it's not going to be appropriated till for two years if there is some imminent threat or imminent need for this project or some stabilization that's done before that.
There's a rating system for bridges if we thought we needed to wait.
Yep, just wanted to.
Scale the bridge, then we would do that, but it but it does need to get done relatively quickly.
And this is set so that we spend the federal funds before we spend the local funds.
Gotcha, thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Not to my knowledge. It's going over the right way.
Okay.
Okay, next project is Lakeside Drive improvements. The project is to widen Lakeside Drive from the entrance at the Plaza to Mural Road, install sidewalks and street trees. Why now is this is the next section of Midtown Connector. We do have revenue share money, it's about a 4.6 million dollar project with 50% of it being VDOT funded.
Any questions about this one? Okay.
The Nationwide Drive Roundabout. This is to be built in 2029 and this is to construct a roundabout that they always stop at Nationwide Drive to help the flow of traffic. And this is currently all city funded. It's about a 9.5 million dollar project.
Vice President Hurdle?
Help me understand this one a little bit because I I know the volume is stated to be high. But it's 100% local. I could be wrong and I'm ready for the emails to say I'm wrong. I don't see an issue with the volume of a four way stop at that location. It's interesting to me that it's not highlighted as there's a lot of accidents at this location. So if we're talking about, you know, a 9.4 million dollar project in total that we're going to be facilitating 100% on our own to the local taxpayer. Help me understand why that's the best use for those funds? Or could we repurpose them to other projects that were polled that might have a better, higher use of a greater need or nix it entirely?
In my understanding, Gaynell's on her way back to answer more specific questions.
Cash of engineers at the ready, so any questions that come up, so Gaynell, we've called a friend, Gaynell's on her way.
Yeah, I mean, this to me, I can see why it would be, to use Councilman Helgeson's term, nice to do. I'd love to know more about the data. It's not that I don't want to do it here. But I don't want to do it here if it's going to be 100% local, it's not a high vol, you know, the another one I think I highlighted in my list is the proposed roundabout at Langer and Vassar. We've tried for years to get, what's the fund? Smart scale funding, we've tried for years to get smart, you know, there's accidents there, okay. $9 million. I I can't, I don't know. So I understand Gaynell's going back and I'm trying very hard to kill time until she gets here, but if someone else wants to comment, please.
Councilman Hugoson?
The saving grace, and I I get it too, it's the good, the only saving grace of this is that it's not for another 30 years. Not till 2029, which can be an eternity. Because once 2029 is getting closer, people are saying, oh, we have other better uses. So those typically are kicked out. So some of the things that are proposed for 2029 are really, I think, more placeholders. There's need today, but it's it's going to be a lot of changes between now and then, so.
Councilor Hurdle?
That's a question that's for Gaynell probably, that's a really terrible intersection there, there a lot. What is the, like, how many accidents, do they have a lot of accidents there?
I did not talk to Lee Newland today, our city engineer, about it. We did not pull accident data, there are a lot of near misses there, people come to a four way stop and don't know what to do. And so people come out, it's it's just very awkward, especially when the doctor's offices are open on the weekdays. I notice it's it's much more prevalent, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Missions?
Yes, this is all city money, I'm sorry, couldn't hear that question, it was hard to hear, it's all city money. We may have an opportunity to apply for revenue sharing in our next round, we just didn't identify this project as a potential revenue sharing project.
So a couple of things. One is, I guess, you know, in jest, would we get a better bang for our buck investing in teaching people how to use four way stops instead of building a 9 million dollar roundabout? But one thing that I think would be helpful in the in the in the future, whenever we're getting detailed information about intersections specifically, is to always have that accident data. Because I think that that should drive decision making when it comes to this stuff is is safety. If we know that we've got issues and challenges at specific intersections with accidents, they should obviously take the priority over intersections where we don't have that. You know, spending years serving that area with the fire department. I'm trying, I'm struggling to recall any accidents at that intersection. I do remember where we had tons of problems with accidents at the intersection of Timberlake Road and Wards Ferry. And that has changed substantially since we've made incredible improvements to that whole flow of traffic and how that's working there. That's just been night and day a difference on on the the volume of accidents that have occurred there. But I think that that's something we all, we should always be looking at that. What, I guess the question I have is there's a big push to these roundabouts. What is the difference in, I guess, cost or investment if you were to do a four way traffic light versus a roundabout there?
Well, the initial capital investment is generally less, but as you know, roundabouts obviously are very safe. I know you're well aware of that, you don't have rear end accidents and those types of types of things. There is a cost to operating that.
The traffic lights?
The traffic lights, the maintenance on the traffic lights, the electricity, what happens when the power goes out, those type of things. So roundabouts are a VDOT approved and actually recommended solution to an intersection like this.
But, you know, when we're looking at the, I guess the question I'm looking at when we're looking at the cost, right? So I understand that there's long term maintenance costs on a traffic light and the capital costs are lower upfront. How much lower? Is it, you know, a million or 2 million for a set of traffic lights at a four way intersection versus 9 million for a roundabout? Do we have an idea anywhere?
I could probably pull some data for you, I don't have it today. You know, there's there's costs where they consider things like when you're sitting at the intersection at a red light and there's no cars coming, which could very well happen at 2 o'clock in the morning, roundabouts, you got free flow, you can just keep going. So I mean, there's just a lot of advantages in addition to safety to roundabouts.
And I guess thinking about that, one thing, I don't know if I've ever seen it at Lynchburg, but I have seen it at other places, I don't know, I can't recall if I've seen it in Virginia. In those we hour, so to speak, is there a way to have the lights programmed from hour A to hour B to where they're flashing yellow one way and flashing red the other way? So that people treat it as, I mean, is that is that an option so that traffic can flow?
We have done that before, particularly in downtown. The places that I'm thinking about, probably Ward's Road and places like that, you wouldn't want to do it. We used to actually do that downtown and and we got complaints about it. So we stopped doing it and so, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just, yeah, because I'm really curious on what, you know, because if it takes 30 or 40 years to make up that 9 million, right? That's a little bit different than spending 9 million for a roundabout and it's just something, just.
We can get you those custom headers.
Vice President Hurdle?
Just very quickly, I know I'm cutting the mayor off. I'm so sorry to do this, guys, I know you guys work incredibly hard on this budget, but page 56. Is this project and total project cost is 9.4, but then are you saying? Which is only why you have 900.
Beyond is the 8.5 million.
Thank you.
So it would be in and out here.
I have a question, maybe the officer in the room can answer it, sorry. On the driving tests, do we, are we requiring people to learn how to drive roundabouts in the driver's test?
It's my driver's ed, driver's ed investment.
Does anybody know, I mean, I I mean, I have children that just recently got driver's licenses in the last few years. Well, the only one that I actually have one that got one in Virginia is my most recent son, but I didn't go on the driving test with them and I don't think it was in the book. But do we require, does anybody know?
That is a state, the DB is a.
Right, I understand that, I know it's not Lynchburg, but does anybody know if we require?
Flannery, when she got her driver's license, had to drive through Lakeside and go through. So whether or not, she learned exactly or they explained she had to drive through that area.
But I wonder if it was specifically for that purpose. Okay, here's why, we lived in Europe for four years. Roundabouts are efficient when people know how to use them. Efficient and safe when people know how to use them because they do cut down on, you know, intersection accidents. And when people do them right, you're in and out and it's wonderful when you know how. And we had, I had to get my European driver's license and and roundabouts are required to learn them and master them before you can get them. And we know here that it doesn't appear a lot of people, it hasn't been grandfathered into our requirements when they started being built. And so coming into Lynchburg and seeing them, I just go, I look like I don't know how to use them because the people here don't know how to use them. So they become inefficient and a danger because people stop when they shouldn't, they don't let people in. So really I have an issue with them because they're not effective for the purpose of what they're designed for. A, so then when we continue to invest in them, while in theory, they should be safer and, you know, and from the engineering standpoint as well, but they're not. I mean, yes, you 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 cut down on maybe higher impact and higher rate of speed collisions, which is great. But we're still, the inefficiency of the investment is still there and that's where I have a problem with it. Because I mean, I've lived in countries where they're, they work really, really well. But then here in our state, we're building them, people don't know how to use them right, so it kind of is redundant for the investment. So I agree that, I mean, spending the money on them when I see people not know how to use them is really upsetting to me. So if there's, this would be something I'd agree with, if there's other places we could spend the money until we figure out how to get people to use them better, I don't know. Can we do something in Lynchburg to help our citizens do better using them? Because I would love to see that with the current ones that we have before we build anymore. Councilman Taylor?
Yes, I'm in that intersection some six days a week. Going from Home Depot downtown. I haven't seen the traffic jam over there. The traffic moved very good over there. So I think it's operating just well as it is.
So you're saying people in Europe are not smarter than people in Lynchburg?
Good.
Yeah, you know, so you don't see a traffic jam over there.
Yeah, no, they.
Well, again, if you can see the data, I think it's, I'm not, I'm not discounting what you're saying at all, obviously. I'm just saying that, you know, there's some good ideas that are thrown out here. And again, if we're looking, and then I know we're talking per Councilman Hugoson's comment, 30 years from now or four years from now. But either way, we're, like, looking at the information is important, but maybe some alternative options would be good too. I mean, comparing the intersection, the the lights versus the roundabout and just seeing if it's really a need for that cost. I think would be worth discussing for sure.
On average, when we replace the signal, and every intersection is different, when when you signalize an intersection, obviously. You're talking 300, 350 per intersection, probably for something like that size of an intersection.
300,000.
Yeah, 300,000, 350. I will say we've done a lot of, thanks to our communications and public engagement. When we started with roundabouts, we did a lot of community engagement with that, trying to get stuff on social media, to train people how to drive them. You know, I hear the frustration.
Yeah.
It still is the safest and most efficient solution.
Right.
But I hear, I hear your frustration with people not understanding how to how to use them properly.
Right, right, right.
Vice President Hurdle?
And I know they're safer, I know they're, I get it. So I think, trust me, I want it to be clear, like, I I know they're safer, probably better for sound, I don't even, I mean, like, they're all waiting for the ad to come out on this one, great, but I think dollars, location, what it could be used for, I think we could find other purposes for it, but.
Oh. Councilman Hugoson?
I think one thing that Gaynell just said that that can give us kind of a comparing apples to apples. If a, if a, like, for example, on this Nationwide roundabout, for a signal is 350 roughly. The difference with the roundabout in this specific area would have to be the purchase of right away. You know, in order to get those big curves and and those turns, that's where I think, and the extra concrete or asphalt or whatever. The right away acquisition to get that big corner, that's where it's going to be. So you're looking at the difference between the 350 for the light versus all the extra. And with that, then I think it would come to a point of saying, well, at some point in time, that extra would be good because it grows so much, you know, that area has grown so much. And this doesn't say that volumes are up and, you know, there's no metrics there. So I think those are some numbers. And again, this is, you know, six years, five, six years away, so.
I will say that we do own a whole right lane that we need.
On this one already?
Because they've got the slip lanes, so we.
So now you're looking at the 350 to just put in light versus 9 and a half million to do all the new curvature and everything?
Yeah, and you've got to understand, this is, this is in 2029 money, so we do have inflation in there, so.
So with that being the case, you know, and some things that aren't that bad, if it's only, not only, but if it's 350,000 for a light versus 9 and a half million to fix it forever, you could almost do 350,000 for, you know, 10 years. Push that even off and you could figure out the the savings just in the less debt we had to pay for for those years for that 9 and a half million. So until it grows to a point that you have to do something, kind of like what we did on Lakeside Drive. You know, Lakeside Drive has been been a lot more traffic at times and well, it got to the point. We had a lot of state money that came in to help on 501 and Lakeside Drive. And then eventually we spent 24 million putting that roundabout and fixing the bridge and doing all those things, so. There may be some good ways to just help signalize this even temporarily, temporarily being 10 years, it would make, you know.
Vice President Hurdle?
My request that if this was to be polled, A, what would the dollars be repurposed for from things that were removed? And then B, if they weren't, if it wasn't to be repurposed, where would the money go? What opportunities would that give us? And I guess that would be for our next meeting, which would be a great segue to go to the next project.
Because the project, as we all acknowledge, is in 29.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you, are you trying to find capacity? Let's say that we we do the numbers and we figure out signalization, are you trying to move the project into 25?
I don't know, I'm asking to see what our options would be. If you have, in other words, and I'm not saying we're going to spend the money, I'm saying, okay, if we were to pull project and have $9 million of capacity.
Right.
A, what would you recommend it go to? And B, if it didn't go anywhere, what other opportunities would that present?
Right.
And I'm not going to use the TR term that you're waiting for me to.
No, 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 it's, it's.
Yeah, I think he just said something that I think you didn't agree with, but I mean, I think you're saying like, don't even have it in 2029. He just said have it in maybe 2025, I don't think you're anywhere near saying that.
I'm not saying that.
I mean, he's saying pull it off in 2029, I think, which would be good, you're.
But we talked about two different things. But we talked about two different things, right? One's a roundabout, the other one was signaling a four-way intersection. So there is an expense associated with that.
Three things.
Right.
Gotcha.
Right. And so that's where I'm trying to understand if you're trying, if there's a desire for a project of some sort in that intersection, is it something less expensive that we're showing in twenty-five? Because realize that the authorization is nine in twenty-nine, it's not that we're growing anything really in twenty-five.
Yeah.
Does it make sense?
From a Chris perspective, I can't speak first to my colleagues, I would, personally, I would do nothing there, then leave it, and then figure out, A, what does nine million dollars of capacity do for you for other projects? Or if not at all, what does that open up for?
Gotcha.
All right.
Okay, so moving on to the Timberlake Road project, or Bridge, Road Bridge, westbound lanes.
Might as well just stick around, Gaynell.
Yeah, hang out there. Feel better when you're there. I don't build them, I pay for them. So the Timberlake Road Bridge, this is the westbound lane. This comprehensive bridge condition report prioritizes this bridge for deck and substructure repairs. And the design would be in twenty-eight, the build would be in twenty twenty-nine. Some of this has been pushed out a little bit as we tried to make the CIP work, and this is all city funding as well.
Vice Mayor.
So this would be a city-funded project that I do think is very important, and I asked for this one, had a number of questions, but the first and foremost would be, why wait, especially with the westbound lane? Timberlake Road, right now, every day is backed up to Kroger once you hit rush hour, if not other times of the day. So as we're looking at two four five oh two, you know, Timberlake Road at this point should probably be five lanes in each direction. That's not going to happen. So where, you can see from a oh-two perspective, why are we waiting? Start there.
Yep, this, this is actually a maintenance project, similar to what we did on, just did on the Rivermont Bridge. We're doing deep, deep deck repairs. So they're going to grind the concrete down, recoat the rebar, re-put the deck coating down, paint, actually paint the steel substructure. This is strictly a maintenance project. It's not going to truly improve other than what's there.
So if I may, here's what my intent was with the question. Intent is, there's going to be more development. Campbell County and that stretch of Timberlake Road is growing. There's going to be more people traveling the road over the course of, what, next five years? It's going to be more difficult, in my perspective, to do the maintenance in twenty twenty-nine because of the continued development, more people, more people, more people. So why wait?
Basically, it's a, it's a funding issue. We try to work with Donna, because it's a funding and really staffing issue. We don't, even if we got money, we don't have people to do all these projects at this time. And so we, we try to, we look at our staffing and what we can do now, and then what we can do in the future, and also try to work on the funding piece, I will say. So that, that was the idea, is we would do west first, and then in the next years, which is outside of the CIP, we would do the eastbound lanes.
I think that, whether you intended or not, from my perspective, reaffirmed my position, that I don't know if we should wait until twenty thirty to fix or maintain this bridge in any way, especially if we're seeing the level of use. I mean, Timberlake Road is going to continue to expand.
Well, I think what Gaynell didn't say is, when we look at, like, the, the condition report, that's why Bedford Bridge is up in there much sooner.
Sure.
So, and we generally don't have, and correct me if I'm wrong, multiple bridge projects going at the same time, one because of funding capacity and the other is because of staffing capacity. So this kind of got pushed to make sure that we prioritize the bridges that were in worse shape, since this is a maintenance project.
Madam Mayor, this will be my final comment, and I appreciate all that, and I'm not necessarily opposed to the strategy. I know what I have to do when I talk to Ms. Quill in Richland Hills and being like, when is this going to be fixed? Like, what's going on with Timberlake? It's blowing up, and now you're telling me the bridge won't be maintained for another five years. What's going on? I need to be able to articulate back, what's the strategy, so.
Yeah, and the bridge is not in bad condition. This is just maintaining the bridge in good condition.
No, I understand.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's not a fall-down bridge. This bridge is in good condition.
Councilman Huguson?
So you said there's two things, like, there's the third one, which is, I think Donna was just alluding to. It's not just the funding capacity, it's not just the staffing, it's the, you know, you don't replace your, your tires, your seventy, fifty thousand mile tires at twenty thousand miles. You get the full use out of them to make sure they get to the fifty thousand miles, then you replace them. I think with this bridge, it's in good shape. The trajectory as well, we're going to need to really start planning because it may start to deteriorate. If it deteriorates a little bit sooner, be a year that we could, or later. Some of these things may go an extra five, six, seven years. Your estimate is probably maintenance for ten million, almost eleven million bucks around, you know, twenty twenty-nine, but maybe a lot longer than that.
We actually just completed a five-year comprehensive bridge condition report, and that's how we base our CIP. They actually put recommendations in there for maintenance, and that is what kind of dictates our CIP, along with funding and staffing. So we've probably got one of the better briefed programs in the state. So just want you to be aware of that. So there's a lot of different factors that go into how we do these bridges and where we place them in the CIP.
So it's nothing like Lynchburg is falling down.
Correct.
Councilman Missions?
Is there been any discussion about potentially the need to, you know, widen that?
We have not discussed that. There, it was a, and I think we're going to get to it later, there are Timberlake Road improvements here that in the out-years, I think it's twenty thirty and beyond. We have not discussed widening that. I think it would be a, I mean, we could potentially look at it, I mean, you're, it's going to be a very difficult and expensive project. Think if we, we've got a, we did a safety study of Timberlake, we've got numerous projects that we could implement, and out of that study, actually VDOT did a study from, I believe it was around the Wartford Road on out, actually went out into the county. So I think that that would be maybe some of the next steps. Wouldn't necessarily be adding lanes and adding a throughway through Timberlake, but just doing some things that would make it safer. And so we do have that study, and that's, that is definitely consideration for Timberlake.
And in a, in a project like that, down the road, we could potentially try to get smart scale funding or.
Correct.
Those sorts of revenue shares to help complete those projects?
That's correct. But that would be the intent, is to apply for revenue share.
And you said, you said we're looking at twenty thirty-ish down, down, you know. So me personally, when I look at this, and it's a, if it's a maintenance project, the maintenance isn't necessarily due yet, preventative maintenance, as I would call it. I kind of like keeping it where it's at, because if in the next two or three fiscal years before we even get to spending a dollar on that, and let's say the condition of the bridge is still good or safe or whatever. But then we know in another year or two, we're going to be doing some project that really enhances the safety of that, and potentially getting alternative sources of funding to help get that project along. It would give us an opportunity to be more efficient with those dollars and kind of combine them together. That's, that's how I see this.
Ms. Bender?
Madam Mayor, just, I think we all heard at the legislative dinner and have heard pretty consistent conversations, that, that, that dollar that we're leveraging at the state is becoming much more targeted, that we're competing now, not, not simply with, you know, our immediate peers, we're competing with Hampton Roads in Northern Virginia for those smart, smart scale dollars. So as we move out in these years, we're going to have to be pretty strategic and nimble and targeted in what we get. So I think we all heard that from our legislation, our local delegation, heard a little bit this year, so fingers crossed, right?
Try to kind of identify this for our board now and know what we're going to target for in the next five to ten years.
Okay, moving, it's five thirty-eight, so I just want to keep us, or five thirty-nine on my phone, so we can keep moving here. Is anybody else on that topic? No? Okay. The City Stadium, oh, did you?
Just a quick question, is the closed session going to be a long time? Because we're, we're going to be able to get everything done by six o'clock, just.
That depends on how many questions people continue to have.
I mean, unless we stop this now, if we have these other things that are going into.
I mean, close should not be long, but I know we want to get to the CIP questions, so. All right, let's keep going. City Stadium visitor side improvements.
That's correct. These, this is for the visitor side of the stadium. It includes ADA accessibility and the press box, bathrooms, and other needs as funds allow. This is a cash-funded project with some design in twenty-six, build in twenty-seven. I think it's pretty obvious you're not going to get all that for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So it will, it may take some more in the future to finish all that, but this is what's here for the project. And the reason we want to get it done is because as we market the stadium for others to use besides city events, as a funding stream, obviously, if it's, looks better and nice and shiny, we have a potential of getting more money and rent for that facility.
Any questions on this? Oh, I have to miss him.
Just one second question. As that stuff comes up, can we maybe prioritize what those specific, you know, there's several things there, try to prioritize those things for what would be the best bang for our buck, and try to keep it to the five seventy-five, and then, you know, if money's available, then we can do the others?
I can give you a list and try to make, sometimes these projects, when you bid them, it's a scale, scale approach, that the more you do, the less it is. And so some of this might be, in doing more, it'll cost us less. So, but we can certainly have that ready for you guys.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, in reviewing this, I have reservations with other needs as funds allow. I want to get a better picture about what that would look like. Unless we're mandated for the ADA accessibility, I say that with a bit of an inflation, inflection to offer a question, are we mandated to do these per the ADA?
This is, this is a Parks and Rec project, so I did not have any responsibility for scoping it, so I don't know.
Unless we're mandated, in my opinion, this doesn't need to be here at all. It's, first off, it's the visitor side. Secondly, like, I hear there might be needs, but if we're talking about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it could be repurposed to a higher and better use or pulled entirely, it should at least go to the home side. I say that with jest, but frankly, I would submit if this offers a.
Yeah, we completed the home side.
I know. So, you know, I'm just saying, if there's five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that could be used elsewhere, or not at all. Say bullet.
Mr. Woody's on the way, can, can talk to this, but I think generally, once you, once you start doing renovations, that's what triggers the ADA compliance.
Then I would submit again, however much it is for the ADA, you know, that's it.
He's going to speak to this?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Woody.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Vice Mayor had a question for you?
Can you, if you weren't tracking it home, I'll try to bring it to speed. So we're talking about the City Stadium visitor side improvements, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I'm asking how much of that we're required to do from the ADA?
The requirement, it's not required. It's, the, the hope is to make it more equitable to what the other side is. So as we're starting to, if we do do improvements, we will have to do some additional ADA accessibility requirements. So the ramp up is the biggest thing. If you look at the first phase on the home side, that was a large project to actually bring the ramp down to make it more of the ADA accessible slope. So that's the similar side of what you have to do on the, on the visitor side.
I would ask us to consider the ramp and nothing else.
Any other comments or questions on this for now? Not for me.
I just saw, Madam Mayor, this is, I think in transition prior to my arriving, this is where you hold your high school graduations, so it's heavily attended there, and so quite a few people, and then I know that Mr. Woody's doing everything he can to monetize the stadium, so to Donna's comments as well, as far as it being a revenue generator. So, but we'll spec out and show you cost options associated with that project in, in later years.
Okay, cool. All right, product details planned beyond fiscal year twenty-nine. Do you want to go over that?
And the reason I put this in here, there was a question about what happened to the eastbound lanes and what happened to the Timberlake Road improvements, and I just wanted to show you, those are, they're not gone forever, that we did push them to the beyond twenty-nine and the five-year scope of the CIP.
Okay, anyone want to comment or question about that? Vice Mayor?
Speak to the road improvements for thirty million, what would that encompass? What would that look like?
I just, I just mentioned that we did a safety study. It was performed by VDOT. We've got a report. It's going to involve restricting a lot of the U-turns and some of the crossover availability up and down Timberlake Road, maybe some turn lane improvements and those type of things. And we think that we can possibly use revenue sharing to maybe phase some of the improvements through Timberlake Road and get this paid for with revenue share or maybe smart scale.
If by tweaking some of the projects that at least I've offered to be amended or pulled, would this be something that those funds could be repurposed for ahead of time?
Well, with the nine hundred thousand, you're getting, not getting a whole lot of capacity towards thirty million.
I'll be a little cute here. I think I've identified a little bit more than nine hundred thousand, some other projects for capacity.
Well, if you moved, I don't know if it makes sense to move Timberlake Bridge.
Fair.
To do these other improvements.
How about a nine million dollar roundabout?
Well, that's actually, you only have nine hundred thousand in this CIP, so.
But based off of what's being said here.
That, that would.
Since I'm getting feedback, here, here's what my point, and this is what I want everyone to understand. If we're putting this type of improvement beyond twenty twenty-nine, Timberlake Road is going to continue to be a thorn in our side. If we can expedite it sooner, and if it means it's nine hundred thousand dollars to get it in twenty twenty-nine as opposed to twenty thirty-two, darn what, darn right, I'm going to ask for that. So that's what I want everyone to understand, is my intention here by asking that.
Okay. Removed project downtown development sub project.
We had a question about what type of projects were being removed. Vice Mayor, I think you said to look at what some of the smaller projects were, and if we could squeeze those in somewhere. This gives you the full scope of what has been pulled out of the CIP.
I do have a question. So the bluff light, bluff hawk lights hardware, obviously, that's self-explanatory, but is there a way that we could try to work that back? I mean, I know, I thought that the amount that we gave last year for that was only five thousand dollars.
No, it was fifty.
Fifty thousand last year as well, and so we're.
Basically expand the, the lights, more installations, and the intent was to do this over the course of a number of years.
Councilman Missions?
When it says hardware, you're talking about things that are permanently installed and left there, correct?
No, like.
Are we talking about actual lights?
Lights.
It would be a light installation.
All right, and as far as the, I guess, the thing that comes to my mind with that is the, is the capacity, the electrical capacity, is there, we're not going to buy too many lights where we exceed what we have capacity to run, are we?
No, we have upgraded the electrical down there.
That's kind of what I was looking for, yeah.
Well ahead of this project, as well as other needs that occurred down there.
So we got plenty of.
We get plenty of power to, to complete the project, correct.
This is one I just, I would just like to revisit, because that was such an amazing event this year, that the feedback was so great about participation in the potential, you know, I mean, again, the family feel and all, and all the Hallmark movie feels were so great, but the potential for revenue generation for businesses downtown, and that being such a long-run event with all the opportunity for us, I think is so great that I would hate for us to, I mean, we saw those initial numbers afterwards, which were phenomenal. I mean, what, thirty-seven percent increase for Water Dog or something crazy? It was, it was just.
Ninety.
No, ninety, I mean, crazy numbers. So that is just one I would like us to talk about, trying, I mean, fifty thousand dollars is, to me, not a major ask to try to put something in that's for, I mean, people were coming from everywhere for that event, so.
Is this something we could fundraise for? Like, through the Parks and Rec Association or something like that?
I think that DLA, the Downtown Lynchburg Association, they actually use this as seed money, and they do a tremendous amount of private sector donations for, for the bright, bright lights project, so. and they do a tremendous amount of private sector donations for, for the bright, bright lights project, so.
So they build on top of this? They use the paper that we give and then they add on top of it, yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Oh, the removed school security improvements, I think there was an update on this maybe somewhere?
Yep, there were questions because they were in '25 and in '26. And I removed them because they were for elementary schools. And there still hasn't been a definite decision on the elementary schools. In '25, it would be Darrington, Perrymont, Heritage, Linkhorn and RS Payne. '26 was for Bedford Hills, Paul Monroe, Sheffield, Bass and Hutcherson. So those were the, the schools that were to be, the security controls in those schools in those two years.
Okay.
We've considered options on how to best, we think that we can push the airport project out a year. And that would then, if we wanted to move ahead with elementaries, I think be able to do elementaries in the years that they proposed.
And that would be because the airport project is just not, is it just not, is not going to be up and running like they predicted or planned?
I think it's just a matter of timing. So we're just going to push it, push it a year if there's more immediacy. And I think like, you know, economies of scale and also if we're already in the high school and the middle schools and making, you know, an effort in the elementary, it just seems like a timing issue.
Okay, so we could probably just put the, put it back where the original 3 million was supposed to be on both, for both years and just use it from there.
That's, that's a pleasure.
Cool.
I do, I do have one question.
Vice Mayor?
I would be supportive of that.
If we can make sure we're understanding the full scope of what that would mean as far as specifically what airport projects, any expectations that have been set with stakeholders. But in general, this is something that I do think we need to pursue. It's, you know, if we're talking about student safety versus an airport project, I think we know where the overwhelming majority of our, our citizens would go. So I'd, I would like to move this direction.
Councilman Missions?
So one question I've got about that is, that is, that also concludes perimeter access too, I think, on the playgrounds and fence lines and things like that, is that right?
In talking with school staff, because it is security related, they didn't really want to make very public the changes that were made, just, you know, it's kind of like not talking about your cybersecurity to give secrets away. So I don't have a whole lot of details.
Because, because I know, I know the one, I, I got an email about a proposed project on Mimosa that's coming, where they're going to be putting a residential, I guess they're proposing a residential subdivision that's going to literally back right up to the, the playground.
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
Something on Mimosa. You know what I'm talking about, Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir.
I saw the head nodding and I was thinking, maybe he knows what I'm talking about. So, and I haven't vetted that out yet, but I'm just, you know, I'll, I'll get what I got and forward it to you guys so you can take a look at it. But I know that there's been some concerns raised about that already.
Okay, removed projects prior appropriation status.
Golly, I really need it. And Councilman Helgason, I think this was your question about what was moved out and what happened to that money of those prior appropriations. So the public library renovation reimagination in 2024, there was about $1.1 million appropriated. What's left of that appropriation is $205,000. And those funds are going to be used for more repairs since we're not doing the major renovation. I think design ate up a lot of that money. So what's left of that million is about $205,000 that they will use. The Campbell Avenue intersection and signal reconstruction, that $3.1 million was appropriated. And we are moving that appropriation to the 501-221 project to help fully fund that. And the same goes for the D Street and Rivermont Avenue intersection improvements. The design money was appropriated in '24. The funding's still there and that'll be moved again to the 501-221 project. The Fireman Fountain restoration, $25,000 was appropriated. There's remaining $24,178. These funds are from donations, so they cannot be moved to another project. The new dog park, we appropriated $210,000. What's unspent is $112,000. That project's scope will be reduced to meet the existing budget. The Miller Park Pool Assessment Replacement, the $50,000 that was appropriated, what's left is $2,650. And these were funds expended for the community engagement and input gathering. And I believe they actually used some of that as well, trying to figure out where the leak in the pool that you all have heard about. The computer aided dispatch replacement, $5 million was appropriated. They still have 4.7, but the project can be completed with this existing appropriation, so they don't need that additional million dollars that was in there. The school, school security improvements, the $2.5 million. They've already started some of these projects in the middle and the high schools and those will continue.
Questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Out of curiosity, because I, this caught my attention. The D Street and Rivermont Avenue Intersection Improvement says funds to be transferred to 501-221 project, which is a very important project. Does this impact the hotel that is coming and what they were expecting in any way? I just want to make sure we're on the same page with them.
We will need some kind of traffic component there when and if that project is built. For now, because we have existing resources for 501-221, because the expense itself is so much, we're trying to find capacity where we can.
Sure.
And so that's, that's what we've done, so.
I just wanted to make sure our partner there understands what to expect and maybe their business model gets impacted or delayed, I don't know. I just thought of it.
Yes.
Councilman Missions?
And there's accounts for all the projects that have been removed, I guess, the prior appropriation projects?
Yes, anything that made prior appropriations and any changes.
So the one thing with the obviously kind of, Miller Park Pool Assessment, $50,000 was budgeted and we just kind of, you had the community engagement of talking to people. Was there any kind of, and you spent most of the money?
Well, I believe they did do community engagement and I believe that Wyatt left. I think he told me that part of this $50,000 was also needed to do the assessments on where the water was going because they had a leak in the pool.
So at least it was some engineering.
So, yeah, so there was, yes, trying to figure out what to do with the pool to make it secure.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Whit. We appreciate all of your help. All right, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder. Councilwoman Dolan. Councilman Helgason. Councilwoman Missions?
I just wanted to say thanks to, just wanted to say thanks to Public Works and city manager had a, had a neighbor in the community who called me about a concern with, I guess he didn't get his trash can yet. And all I had to do was shoot an email and he had a trash can the next day. So I just want to thank you guys for hopping on that and taking care of that. Appreciate it.
Hold, you have to wait for my public, you have to wait for my comments? Or do you have to go? Is it an emergency or are you all right?
I, no, there's no emergency.
Hold on one second. I skipped Public Works last time, so I want you to hear it. Okay, are you done? Councilman Taylor? Okay, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Fraldy?
Forget me, I do have a couple. Winhurst, thank you, the manager, for engaging on that. There is an issue. Not sure what's going on, but consistently there's a boatload of Papa John's trash that is just flying out of a vehicle and consuming Enterprise Drive. And I've done my level best, since I live in the neighborhood, not to be like, there's trash on my front yard, yard. But multiple HOAs and community groups have been engaging me and saying like, what is going on here? Because we're having citizens go out and pick up the trash, which we appreciate. But, you know, we do have a well-equipped staff, so thank you for being responsive there. I do hope we can figure out what's happening. I would request some information either offline or in a presentation. I have been approached by a number of folks who are concerned about now, I think, two stories in our area, not in Lynchburg, but surrounding us of those who are here illegally engaging in criminal activity and impacting Virginians. Those who live in Bedford or Campbell. And the email I had was, quote, Chris, this is too close to home. So I would like to know what our policies are there, how that's being impacted and what our engagement, at least from a law enforcement perspective, has been to engage that issue. Because I agree, that is too close to home. And more information, what are we doing? How are we engaging that? And then also if we come across somebody who's, shouldn't be here, what do we do? I have my own expectations, but I'll, I'll wait and see what the city staff can produce. Thank you.
That's all? Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to highlight the Department of Public Works tonight. Many of us take for granted that our trash will be picked up, the grass in the parks and right-ofways will be removed, our streets will be safe to travel and our public facilities will be adequately maintained. Our Public Works Department maintains over 800 lane miles of roadway, including bridges, traffic signals, mowing and landscaping. 100 C-owned buildings and over 800 of parks and trails and provides trash collections for over 20,000 customers per week. Our Public Works Department is responsible for design and construction of transportation, building and other infrastructure projects. Examples of recently completed projects include Lakeside Drive Bridge and restoration, restoration of the Riverside Park overlook. Exciting projects currently underway include a 100,000 square foot state-of-the-art police department headquarters on Oddfellows Road and an amphitheater and restroom scheduled to start this spring in Riverfront Park. Much of the work of our Public Works Department goes completely unnoticed, such as custodial cleaning, the Knight Street sweeping program, ditch maintenance and roof and HVAC replacements. Did you know our Public Works employees also provide support for numerous special events? These include races, concerts and festivals, and most recently, the Downtown Lynchburg Association's Bright Nights on the Bluff Block Winter Light Display. While police, fire and emergency services are often the three most recognized first responders, Public Works is often silently there, providing vital support to emergency response partners, reopening streets after windstorms, plowing snow and restoring other essential services following an emergency. The department recently received notice of a project award for large transportation projects from the Mid-Atlantic American Public Works Association for the Lakeside Drive Bridge Project. This project competed with many other worthy projects throughout the states of Virginia, Maryland, District of Columbia and West Virginia. Our Public Works Department services are vital to the safety and the high quality of life we enjoy in our beautiful city. So thank you, Public Works. Okay, you can go. You don't want to say, you do not have to. I grabbed her on her way out. Thank you, Gaynor, so much. I'd also like to congratulate the girls varsity basketball team from LCA for winning the VHS All-State Championship this past weekend. That was awesome. And I also would like to announce that the YWCA is having a domestic violence awareness event at ECLAS High School on the 28th of March at 7:00 PM. So we're really encouraging the community to turn out for that and learn more about that, that important subject matter. And also it is MS Awareness Month, Multiple Scleriosis Awareness Month. Wanted to acknowledge the significance of that. This month serves as a pivotal opportunity to raise awareness about MS, a condition that affects millions worldwide. Through education and advocacy, we can foster understanding and support for those living with MS as well as their families and caregivers. By recognizing the challenges they face and the resilience they demonstrate daily, we can contribute to a more inclusive and supportive society. Let us take this moment to reflect on the importance of spreading awareness and offering compassion. Together, let us strive to create a world where those affected by MS feel empowered and supported in their journey. We now have consideration of a closed meeting to receive legal advice and information regarding the term of a member of a board or commission pursuant to sections 2.2-3711A1 and 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go into closed meeting? Have a second? Any further discussion? Cast your vote, please.
I do, I do have.
Oh, yes.
Kind of does that give you the motion? But New Covenant Boys Basketball also just wants to.
Oh, yes, they did, you're right, so.
And I, and I meant to mention that, but I forgot it, but they, they did.
Yes, congratulations to New Covenant's boy basketball team. Congratulations. Okay, so we need to do a voice vote, I guess?
Councilwoman Dolan? Yes. Councilwoman Missions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fraldy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are now in closed session.